This is Open Line.
Good evening once again, everybody. I'm Carrie Sharp. Thank you for joining us for this special Open Line. It is day three of our deep dive into the Metro School Board races, and tonight we are looking at District 8. We have two of the candidates, or the two candidates here with us tonight, who are running for the seat of Mary Pierce, who is not running again. And these are the schools, District 8 covers the schools that lead into Hillsborough High School. So if that is your district, this is your night to watch. We welcome all viewers. Of course, we will be taking your phone calls. The number is on the screen. Feel free to call in with your questions for these candidates. The election is tomorrow, finally, right? So it is your chance to have your voice heard. Let me introduce you to our great candidates here tonight, Adam Barice and Jeannie Pupo-Walker. Thank you both for being here tonight.
Pleasure. Thank you.
I just want to start off the way we have started the last two nights. Introduce yourself to our audience and say why you're running for school board. Adam, we'll start with you.
Sure. So I lived in Nashville the last 15 years. I've been raising two kids with my wife, and my second one is entering the school system. My first one's a third grader, both at Metro Nashville Public School, and planning on continuing throughout their education through the 12th grade. And we realized there were some issues. Was the treasurer for the elementary school last year and continuing to this point. And when the budget came out earlier this year in February, I think it was, we, it was a little taken back by what was given to the principal, the lack of autonomy she had in making decisions, and the limitations that were put upon everyone by what she could, what could happen within the school, and how much was being pushed on the PTO to be able to continue a good education for our children. I then moved on to spend time with the, to school board meetings, talking with Mary Pierce, watching the ongoings, as I know you're aware, and it just, I realized there was a major issue. And there was a major issue with the budget. There was a major issue with understanding the budget from the school board, and the school board itself had their own issues. And I realized with my background, with my knowledge base, with my personality, I felt like it would be a good fit for the school board to help it move forward in a better direction and help drive, what we're all supposed to be here for, is the children's education, making, preparing them for what we call the real world after the 12th grade.
And what is your background? What is your education, your skill base?
So I undergraduate in public economics and a interdisciplinary major from American University in DC, and MBA from Loyola in Baltimore, and then I did PhD work in organizational leadership, although I walked away before the, my dissertation. So a lot of time studying and researching leadership and development of first-line employees, which we call teachers, but decided to move away to run a company in the medical industry.
Gotcha. Jeannie, your turn.
So I thank you, first of all, for hosting us tonight.
You're welcome.
I grew up in Nashville. I went to Hillwood High School, graduated from there, raised my kids here in District 8, grew up in District 8, and I was an educator for over 20 years. So I started as a substitute. I was a high school Spanish teacher. I taught college adjunct for a little while. Returned, we returned to Nashville in 2004, and I got a job at Overton High School, and really got acquainted with Metro schools in that way, and left the classroom to do some teacher coaching and high school redesign, and eventually moved into family engagement and had a district-level position for four years running family engagement for the school system, and left that three years ago to work for a nonprofit here in Nashville called Conexión Amélicas, and so I led all of our education policy and advocacy and programs.
I want to start with the big picture, looking at the board, because that is what you are running for. When you look at the board as it is now, what is the biggest challenge, you think, facing the school board members?
Start. Well, there's multiple things facing the school board members. I think it is a focus on student outcomes. Currently, they're all over the place. They are infighting about what I've continued to call red hearings. They get on their own soapbox and forget about the students. And from the latest 10 ready scores, we should be really looking at the students, because it was pretty abysmal, to say the least, from, from the data that we have. I'm looking forward to see the more minutia of it. But as a city, Metro Nashville Public Schools is truly in a bad place right now.
Jeannie, what's your take?
So, you know, you'll find that Adam and I agree on a lot of things. I think for me, I came into this campaign really advocating about student achievement and student outcomes, and so I would agree with him on that. I think that's the primary sole purpose of a public education system, and so how we define success is how well our students are doing when they leave us and then when they graduate. And so all of the metrics along the way are really indicators of success for them when they leave us. And so people will argue about the validity of the test scores this year and perhaps the last several years, but I think there's many, many metrics that we can look at to talk about student success, whether that is if they're coming in kindergarten-ready, if they're reading on grade level in third grade, if they are entering in successful in Algebra I in ninth grade, how they're doing on an ACT, there's, and then, of course, how they're doing when they leave us. Are they going into post-secondary? Are they successful when they get there? And so on many of, many, many of our students are doing well. We have really great bright spots, particularly in our district, but we have far too many kids that are not being equipped for the economy that Nashville is today. And so I see myself as someone who has seen education from many points of view. I'm a believer in accountability. People are often uncomfortable with that term. I think accountability, it's a collective, city-wide accountability. We're all accountable for how students do in Tennessee, I mean, in Nashville. And so I, I think, you know, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and do the hard work. It's a complicated issue.
It sure is. And when you look specifically at your district, District 8, what sticks out to you as your top priority, and then what specifically will you do to achieve that? Jeannie, I'll start with you on that one.
So I would say that, I mean, we have some really high-quality schools. We have really incredible family engagement. We have some of the best teachers in the system. Teachers tend to stay in high-performing schools. We have many teachers with a lot of experience, but we still lose families tier to tier. We lose families after elementary. We lose families after middle school for a range of reasons, right? To private, to magnet, out-of-county, maybe to charter. And so I think for us, it's how are, what are we, what's the product we're selling? How do we keep our families? How do we keep our neighborhoods intact and in our neighborhood schools? And so what's the story we want to tell about our neighborhood schools and keep our families with us?
Adam?
I think she's on the right page there. I mean, we are, in addition to what she said, we're defunding our District 8 schools. And I know it's to support other schools and other areas that have, have issues outside of what District 8 sees as, as a general aspect, but we have to find a way to keep our schools funded at least to a level that we can continue to improve. And we're not there right now. So we have to look hard at the budget that's been presented, the larger budget, I mean, to Metro, to the state, to federal opportunities to, to drive money in, so that we don't continue to defund District 8 and to offer money to other areas. We need to keep District 8 funded and offer the money needed to other areas.
And how do you do that? Because that was one of my questions down the line here was, you know, you do have some great schools in District 8, but how do we bring poor-performing schools in more stressed economic areas up without taking away, though? I mean, I see your point. How do you do that?
You know, that's the challenge. And you're doing it right now. I continue to look at, we're looking at a budget that is, has limitations. It really does. But we first have to identify where we are misspending our money. And that's an important starting point to gain the trust. And I heard two nights ago, when you had other candidates on, the big word was trust.
Yes.
They were on the ball there. The citizens, the voters, need to trust where this money's going. They need to trust what the Sean Joseph is doing with the money, how the board is managing the money. Once we gain that trust and we identify where the money currently is being spent in more detail, because right now we're a little lost, once we do that, we then can build a plan from each school. I really am about autonomy of the public schools, so that the principals that run the schools can really give, or identify what is needed to help improve their schools to the next level, and then drive that budget up to Metro, saying, here's the reason we need it. We now got the trust of the general public, and then drive the money that we can't get from Metro, we drive to the state and federal opportunities, grant writing, whatever needs to happen, we then can make that and look at that true budget. Because right now, we're limiting ourselves and saying, let's steal from Peter to pay Paul.
Right.
It's just not acceptable.
Jeannie, how do you weigh in on this one? How do you allocate the resources fairly across the board?
Well, I mean, I think fundamentally, the bottom line is that we're underfunded. We're underfunded as a district. We're underfunded. The state has not fully funded the BEP. And so I think that is the conversation that has to be had, right? And so we are, again, I agree, we're spreading the dollars that we get very thin, and, and so really, really tough decisions have to be made. And so I agree that we shouldn't be giving less money to some schools, right? I think all schools should be fully funded. And I think, I think we're, as a district, I think 9,000 plus per pupil. I was just reading last night about funding in other states. I mean, there's many, many, I mean, we're in the bottom half, right, in terms of per pupil allocation. I think we need to get up to 12,000, 15,000, 18,000 per student to really deliver a high-quality education.
As you both well know, Dr. Joseph has been criticized in recent months for his handling of the budget, the $7.5 million shortfall for the elimination of reading recovery, and also, most recently, because of our reporting, the investigation about the sexual harassment allegations happening in District 6 at JFK Middle School. Do you support Dr. Joseph and his administration? Jeannie, I'll start with you.
So I will say, when he was here interviewing as a candidate for director of schools, and even his first year, I was encouraged by his philosophy, his approach, his priorities. I think the first year was a strong year in terms of getting the board aligned with his vision of setting a strategic plan. I think where the rubber meets the road is really, is the, is the question. Are we actually meeting the goals that the board and the superintendent has set out? And I think the metric for success is that, right? Are we actually on track? And so when we have issues, like a principal that is found to be harassing staff, it's a complete and total distraction. Obviously, board members don't get into personnel issues. That's not their job. But it shouldn't be the responsibility of the news to tell us where we have issues with personnel. And so I always say, everything I learned as an adult, I learned teaching high school students.
I understand that.
If you allow a student to behave or perform in a certain way, and you don't do anything about it, the signal to the rest of the class is that that is acceptable, or that the rules are different for different people. And so ultimately, the responsibility lies with the leadership of the district. The message must be, right, that we are enforcing policy fairly, justly, equitably across the district, because that inspires faith in faculty and in staff, and so, and ultimately, in students and parents. And so I think Dr. Joseph has had some real struggles communicating his vision, communicating his priorities. The budget process was confusing to me. Someone who's sat through many budget processes at the district, I, it didn't reflect what I felt were clear priorities. It felt like there was a lot of push and pull and tug of war, and it became, it looked personal. I think that's inappropriate in a budget conversation, close to a billion-dollar budget, right? And so I think this is the year, the test year. I think he has to prove that he has put the pieces in place, the personnel in place, to deliver. And I think it's going to be a challenging year for him. I think that the goal now should be some stability and getting the school year started and getting on track.
Adam, do you support Dr. Joseph and his administration?
No. I think we have issues here, and I did write a little piece for Channel 5 Publish where I said, this is maybe where Jeannie and I do differ a little. I think he has shown where his inhibilities are, and that is creating trust with the community, creating trust with the teachers, creating trust with the administration in District 8. He has, he's improving himself ineffective. We now have data from 10 Ready, year over year, that shows significant losses in educational outcomes at the high school level, which is probably the most concerning, because they're out in their own world now, and 9.5% of our students graduating are going to be, are considered proficient in the math, at the math level. I mean, that's pretty
Only 9.5%?
9.5%. I mean, that's the, as low as we've ever seen. Now, the state's not incredibly high. We do have a, a poor state in terms of our, or of the ability to educate, because we're only at 21.5%, but they're beating us by almost threefold. That's, that's concerning. So, no, I don't think there's, I think Dr. Joseph's personal issues, we can set aside. We can just look at what a superintendent is supposed to do and what we can identify he's not going to be able to do in the coming, in the short term, and it's not going to regain any trust with the way he manages policies, with the way he talks about hiding things versus bringing things out in the open. It's just not going to work. So I think he's a bad job fit for Nashville, and I think it's time to find someone else. But with that all said, the board also has to take some faults, that they have not stepped up and set real standards for him from the beginning, and we need to do that for not just Dr. Joseph, but for anybody else coming in. They need to be held, as you use the word accountable. Accountability is very important for the, for not only the, for the principals, for the teachers, but for the superintendent. We need to know where he's going to stand, what his outcomes are going to be month over month, quarter over quarter, year over year, so we can really see how we're tracking versus what our expectations are.
We're going to jump to the lines. We have Taylor on the line. This is Open Line, by the way, still, even though we're kind of really diving deep into some of these questions, but this is your chance to ask questions of these candidates in District 8. I'm also going to hop on the iPad over here and look at our Facebook folks and see if you guys have been commenting with some questions as well. We have Taylor on the line. Taylor, thank you for being with us. What's your question?
Well, my question is, thank you to these two guests from District 8 for being on. I will say, my daughters went to, through school in that district. They're now through college, but since I pay enough in property taxes, I feel like I could, and have been interested in education for a long time. I recall watching Dr. Joseph some time ago on this program, and it was evident that something, this was mainly about the overspending on contracts and everything else. And the answers he gave on some of those questions just absolutely stunned me over how you personally pick contractors without going through the process. You set the parameters of what's to be done after they're finished and presented the bill. I just couldn't believe those statements, and that would be worthwhile for, go back and other folks look at that show. But my, my point is, both District 6 and 8 need a new representative on the school board. I think the state law restricts a little too much, I mean, power-wise, just to the superintendent. But the superintendent should not have the authority to change purchasing rules and all the other guidelines to fit his whim. And so I'm just really discouraged and feel like the board has really, I don't know who they, what firms they use to look for superintendents, but we've just had one mistake after another for the, probably at least the last three superintendents, and we're never going to get these grades and so forth up until we do a better job on that. And if a kid has one right in this world, it's the absolute right to read. I know there's a lot of other programs and courses in school, but if a child can't read by the second grade, he's going to be a dropout. And I, there just can't be enough emphasis put on that. That's my comments, and thank you very much.
Taylor, thank you for your insight tonight, and I think one, one direction Taylor was going was, the board that we have now does not take a very direct, day-by-day, hands-on approach to overseeing the, the school's director and his administration. Do you feel like that is the right approach, or not? Adam?
Let's see, it's a, it's a good question. If you are, if you're trusting your superintendent, then yes, the board's responsibility is to oversight. It is to manage and it is to set standards. The standards that, we're just spoken by, by Taylor, who is absolutely correct in his comments with, you can't change the playing field as the superintendent when the school board is supposed to be oversighting you. You can't, I remember when I walked in, he was signing, I believe it was, signing $100,000 or plus contracts where the board was supposed to be involved, but they just missed them completely. Those kind of things can't happen. So yeah, you have to have the oversight. You have to put into play the parameters, but as with, I talked about the principals having autonomy, the superintendent also needs autonomy to run the school district his, his or her way in the future to, to be successful. So you just really need to hire well. That's something maybe we've been lacking recently, but we do need to look, in the next search, we need to look for somebody that is capable, competent, and that we can trust in, and hope we made the good decision. If we didn't, we'll look again.
Jeannie, do you think this board has the right approach currently?
Well, I mean, I think, I don't know if it's legally, but the role of the board, excuse me, is right to pass a budget, hire and evaluate a superintendent, and to write policy. And so they're not meant to get into day-to-day and operations and to micromanage hiring decisions, contract decisions. I mean, I think, again, I'll go back to my point, which is, there are processes in place, there are policies in place, which must be followed. If they're not followed, then what are we going to do about that, right? And ultimately, at the end of the day, the responsibility lies with the director of schools and with the Board of Education. And so if we feel that there is a capricious approach to giving out contracts, to monitoring contracts, right, I think that has to be addressed, and leadership is essential in every one of those conversations.
Over the last two years, even in this booming city, we have seen the overall population of MNPS drop when it comes to student population. What would you do as a school board member to grow the confidence in this school system? Because at the end of the day, the system needs more students, right? Jeannie, do you want to start there?
Sure. I mean, I have followed, monitored closely the demographics of the system for some time, part of it was my job and part was just interest. And so we have seen a decline in enrollment, you know, and I don't know that we know if that is lack of trust in the system, but I do think it's closely related to affordability. Our families can no longer afford to live in Nashville. And so we have families that, once they want to put their children in school and they want to have a home, they're moving to Rutherford County. They're moving to Wilson County. They're moving out of county to buy a house that they could not afford in Nashville. And so we know that those counties are growing in population, in school age population, while we're losing. And so I think that's one of them. You know, I actually have been looking at how other urban districts that are gentrifying rapidly and losing families to outer boroughs, what they're doing, and some of them are doing interesting ways, things to keep the families, because often the adults are still working in the city.
Right.
But they're living out of county. And so
Things like what?
So Austin has a policy where there's no penalty if you keep your child in the district, in the, in Austin ISD, in the school system. So you can, if you are showing that you're working in the system, you can, in the city, you can keep your child in the school system. Now, I don't know if that's what people would want, but I think it's an option that should be available. I think it's disruptive. We see it all the time. Families will leave or move around, and so, but I do think ultimately, we have to have a product that is attractive to people. And so they need to feel confident that the school that they're assigned to is going to be a good fit for their child and they're going to be successful.
Adam?
I'll focus in on District 8, because you did a nice job speaking of the general area. District 8 has roughly, I've understood, almost 80% of the students that could be in Metro Nashville Public Schools are in private schools or other options, pro-coal schools. That in itself is a, is an issue. That in itself shows, in a lot of cases, distrust. And you can understand the concerns when they hear what's going on with the school board, when they hear what's going on with the, with the superintendent. But more importantly, when we look at the numbers that we were just talking about, the 10 Ready numbers, which I have to go back to, because, you know, hot-off-the-press type of information. But when our science proficiency in the high school level goes down by almost 30%
It's shocking.
in a year, it's shocking. And how are we going to drive more students that are getting a good education at, at one of the many District 8 private schools? How are we going to drive them back to the public schools past the fourth grade if we don't start to improve things? And that's going to take, again, going back to changing the game, gaining the trust, giving more autonomy to our principals, allowing them to make decisions that help that school and help them improve their outcomes, because District 8 does better than the average here, as you know, well better. But still, we have a lot of room to, that we can improve, and we need to show those, all of that to the general public, so we can drive those kids from fourth grade to fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and on, over to Hillsborough High School.
As you both well know, just overall, the district is having a really hard time retaining teachers. There have been different ideas about what to do, whether it's just to fill those spots with substitute teachers or to add online classes. How do you guys feel about this issue? What should the school district do to keep teachers, and in the absence of them right now, what do you do? Jeannie, I'd love to hear your opinion, because you were a teacher in the system.
So, you know, I've done a lot of work in my day job around advocating around teacher retention, teacher hiring, teacher recruiting. So we have a whole pipeline issue, right? How, we have less people enrolled in teacher preparation programs than ever before.
Wow.
People are not enrolling in college and becoming teachers, and so that's a critical issue. So I think we have to be creative about where we get teachers from, right? So Teach for America is an option, but I think alternative residency kind of programs, alternative licensure programs are something that should be expanded. These are often second career, career changers, so people who are maybe in their 30s, more mature, more focused, perhaps, might be a good fit in our schools. And so I think we have to be creative and innovative around where we are looking for teachers and training teachers. And then I think we have to pay teachers more, obviously. I mean, but I think as a former teacher and someone who works with educators, they're not leaving just because of the money, right?
Why are they leaving?
They're leaving because they feel tremendous sense of pressure for a whole host of reasons. I think that what we have to do, if we're asking them to teach to higher standards, we're asking them to increase rigor, we're asking them to personalize learning. You know, I have a mentor who says, for every unit of change you expect, you must provide an equal measure of support. And so we have to give teachers time. We have to give them materials. We have to give them the right training. We have to give them opportunities for leadership and growth. We have to have principals in place that support them. A lot of times, teachers will leave because of the leadership in the building, and how do we, how do we address that? And so are we doing exit interviews, and if we are, are we learning from exit interviews? Are we listening to what teachers are saying here, we're leaving, and are we adapting to that? And so I think it's a fixable problem, but I will say it's a national issue. Teacher retention is a national issue. I think millennials in general do not stay in one job.
Right.
Like, maybe we did, right? And so I think we have to be creative about where we get our teachers and then creative about how we keep them.
Adam?
Oh, we're going to start the school year off 900 to 1,000 teachers short.
Wow.
That's troublesome, because teachers are kind of the backbone of the entire school system. It is what's needed. We're not doing what is needed to keep them. Jeannie is absolutely correct with all the, the moving forward. We have a smaller pool to play with, and there's great things happening. But this year alone, we decided not to take all of the opportunities from Teach for America, because we didn't want to pay the, the fees that are associated with their employment. But right now, 900 short, the fee is really that our children are not going to get a proper education. It's, it's, again, we go back to a, a point of absurdity. So what do we need to do? Yes, we need to pay our teachers more. They are well underpaid. They are going to Williamson County. They are going to the other surrounding counties, because they pay more. Sumner County, I mean, you pick it. They're, they're paying more for teachers, especially past the first year. When we, and the data that Metro Nashville shared with us was that by the sixth or eighth year, we were 18% below the, the local counties.
I mean, that's a no-brainer, right?
Yeah. I'm going to move on to another job. I mean, especially when there's, if you think about the issues at hand here, Metro Nashville has some, some more significant issues in, in general than Williamson County, than some of the surrounding counties. So we need to pay more, but you also have to give them empowerment. It is more than just pay. It's empowering. It's making them feel important. It's allowing them to have decision-making. And then we get back to planning and budgeting and allowing them to be part of the entire mix for a school that's run by a principal, so it's a one-line down. It becomes very valuable, so they're part of a family. It is stealing from what a lot of these charter schools that are successful are doing and bringing them to the public school system and driving that to success. It's, it's shown to work. We can just, we just need to implement it and get the right people to help us do that.
You brought up charter schools. How do you all both feel about charter schools? Adam?
I think charter schools are here for a very clear reason. We have a failing school system. They see an opportunity. It's, and more are going to come in as we continue to drive down our numbers. When we, when they, when anybody sees 9.5% competency level in, in math, proficiency level coming out of high school, there's something wrong. If they, if there's a way that they can fix it, the people are going to come in and try to fix it. There are some impressive charter schools there that I just talked about. They do some great work with social-emotional learning. They do good work with education. I have my kids in a public school. I hope to continue down the traditional public school, the neighborhood schools, because when you lose neighborhood schools, you lose community. And that's the one thing we really lose when we're talking about these charter schools. I'm not as big of a fan. We can do the math on it. I don't think they're stealing all the money, because they're taking the kids with it. But we need to, we need to look at our public school system, and we need to improve it to a point where charter schools become irrelevant, where our, where our neighborhood schools, if you have a school right next to you that's doing incredible work, why would you send them across town to a charter school? It's, it's a clear decision that any parent would make, once that decision is available to them.
Jeannie?
So, you know, I've been really, really grateful that this election season has not been one that has been, you know, so vitriolic around this issue.
Yes. The last two really have been.
It was a litmus test in the last two election cycles. Either you were with them or you were against them, and that was what defined you. And so I'm really glad that we were able to have a more And so I'm really glad that we're able to have a more nuanced conversation around this issue. And so I have a lot of experience as, working in the district with charter schools. When I worked at Glencliff High School, Cameron Middle was converting to lead, lead middle prep. And so I, so I helped those families understand that transition. I saw what that transition looks like, how complicated that can be. And so the reality is that it's a complicated landscape now in terms of choice. And so as a district employee, I wanted to know more about how that worked and how that operated. And so I volunteered to lead a team that reviewed charter applications. I did that for three or four years. And we made recommendations to approve or deny charter applications to the board, right? And so we recommended denial for about 70% of them.
Wow.
30% were really strong. And so Nashville developed a reputation as a strong authorizer. It's what's called an authorizer of charter schools. And that's why we have a higher percentage of them, high-performing than many other cities. I recognize that they draw money and students from our neighborhood schools. I totally get it. But at the same time, we have families that have very poor options right now, and they want something different for their child. And so I think the role of the board is to be a good actor in that and to show leadership. And so that looks like building up, we have a very tiny department at the district that manages charter schools. It's two people. It's not enough to manage 29 schools, 12,000 students, to really be monitoring, partnering, holding them accountable, making sure they're enforcing policies, making sure students are successful, families understand what's happening, transportation is working. All of those pieces are very complicated, and we have kind of been hands-off because we've kind of said, not us, not our problem. And I think they are part of our system, and we must treat them that way.
Both of you have mentioned the word accountability quite often. And I wonder, as a school board member, how you would ensure fiscal responsibility and accountability by Dr. Joseph and the board and his administration? What would your role be as a board member to ensure fiscal accountability? Adam, you want to start?
Absolutely. Transparency needs to, needs to improve. What we saw this last budget cycle, and still, I'm a little confused by the budgeting, and I know it's a funding-based budget, so it's a little more amorphic, I would say.
Right.
But we can do a better job of identifying where the dollars are spent. It brings us back to that trust perspective. Without being able to share with the public, with the voters, with the taxpayers, where the money is being spent, how it's being spent, we're not going to gain their trust. If we don't gain their trust, we're not going to be able to ask for the money that's really